All right, we are live and in color. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Steve, if you could help us out with the roll call, please?
Sure. Hold the person's logo up.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Valdi.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Woo! Wow, that worked. Uh, Grimmer is not here.
He's here, he's here.
Oh, it should have been a little slower.
Man.
I'm calling roll call.
And then nick-a-time, nick-a-time. Grimmer's here. Just like Santa.
Yeah. Yes.
Here.
And Administrator Hefner.
Here.
And Mayor Atwell.
Present. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to item number four, citizens' comments. Who would like to speak to citizens' comments? You look ready.
So do you. She was down the offhand else. Unless they came in for now.
Sure, yes, please come up. State your name and address. You know the routine.
I'll do. Okay. I'm gonna go first and then Susie can deliver some. Hi, everyone. My name is Jackie Leiden and I live at 1614 West Shore Drive. And I came in tonight really sort of over a pattern of concern. So I'll just begin by mentioning projects. Milwaukee Street project, the Genesee Street Highway C separated path, the Nega Wicke path, the almost invisible plan to put a 400-foot cover to cross a small waterway underneath West Shore Drive, and now the Oakwood Road separated path. And to me, as a citizen, what these plans have in common is that while they have generated support, they've also generated what seems to me to be an unnecessary amount of contention. Some of the plans have been stopped, some have been modified. I have to say that I was surprised by this possible path in 2022 on Oakwood Road. And not so much over the project itself, but that it comes wrapped, to me, in a wearying cycle of spend and then justify. And I'd like to hone in on that. And if there's a reason that those of us who live on West Shore Drive object to spending on Oakwood Road, feeling paranoid, which is one of the adjectives, one of my responses that I received, then I think surprising us with a pandemic or a meeting eight days before Christmas is a red flag. And that the answer from the supporting alderman whose neighborhood is benefited by this did come wrapped with some sarcasm congratulating me on being able to use email and dismissing my concerns, even though this project is probably not going to happen if it even does, we're not sure, for a couple of years from now. So what I really object to is that there doesn't seem to be a learning curve from these unquestionably contentious public meetings and gatherings. Not even after the West Shore Drive protected waterway was declassified under state law without informing the neighbors. Our city manager chose not to, said it was a mistake. When he and Mayor Atwell got tremendous blowback from us, we actually thought that that would improve the learning curve and the communications and better inform us as citizens about things going along as time goes on. Because I think it's really hard to trust this city government when this pattern doesn't seem to change. I'm not saying I have every fact right this evening. It is entirely possible we've had a huge stuff, amount of stuff on the home front of late. But, and I may have made some errors. But I think that information can be scanned in Delafield, and that I do believe. And that money always seems to be there for another hardscape, another sidewalk, or something like that, or a possible marina. But lately, our dog was nearly killed when hit by a car on West Shore Drive. And my alderman said that it would be difficult to get speed bumps through the city because they interfere with snowplows and that the city doesn't want any more signage there about slowing down on a 15 mile an hour curve. And yet, we can hold a pandemic meeting about a sidewalk. So I think there's a certain kind of one-way street that the community seems really good at building that it sometimes feels, perhaps isn't, but feels very elective or secretive, but there's often a baffling lack of communication to the citizens, a sort of tone deaf quality when a complaint is made. And the certitude that City Hall seems to be looking for a way to spend our money and then back justify the reason for doing it. So if I'm skeptical of the need for a block-long sidewalk on Oakwood Road for $90,000, that is why. It's because of everything that's happened in the last seven years and not because I want to be the greatest who stole Christmas and come down four days before the holiday and complain because I'd rather be saying Merry Christmas. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and thank you for doing your job.
Same to you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay. Anybody else?
Love your boots.
Excuse me?
I said, "Thank you, Jackie, I love your boots."
Oh, okay. Uh, who would like to be next? Who would like to be next? I know you both, but name and address, please.
Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. Lion, Susie.
Lion Kirk Carlson, West 30513 County Road K Hartley.
And as you can see, I'm a lion now. Kirk and I are here to represent the Delafield Lions to tell you about the fishery that we're going to have. We're planning on Saturday, February the 13th, 2021, at the Fish Hatchery. And we would like not only your support, but we'd like you to help us get the word out. Before the American Legion was broken into, they were already talking about not having it due to COVID because of their concerns of having their normal numbers of about 100 fishermen and then with additional people that would come later. They cannot have that many people in their building at the American Legion. And it is difficult to control a crowd when you're used to having an event that's been happening for many years. So they had already identified that they were not going to have the fishery this year. As Lions, we are planning on having it in a COVID-safe environment with the idea that it is an outdoor event. We are planning to have a 20-by-30 tent outside with a DJ, one of our neighbors in Delafield here, Red Jill Leroy with something tunes. She's a DJ, is going to provide free DJ music for us. Red Leroy... Ring tunes, sorry. We have, we have to have raffles and auction items. Really, it'll be raffles in order to make money. This is an expensive event to hold. The car show was very expensive. We took care of that this year, as you all know. I helped with Mike Dries next door to us. And we had a very successful event. It was not a huge moneymaker for the Lions, but it was huge benefit to the businesses in Delafield. Instead of collecting money from some of the businesses and then giving it back to Delafield, our goal is to have an event that'll bring people to Delafield in a safe way. So we are going to promote it as a Valentine's weekend event and hoping that some of the fishermen or women or kids who come will bring additional family members that they might leave deserted downtown so that they can go shopping and have an early lunch and then join us at the Fish Hatchery later in the afternoon. Kirk's been in the Lions much longer than me and he can tell you it takes, it takes a lot of people to hold this kind of an event. Right?
Right. And I don't know what else to add besides everything that you just mentioned. We're hoping to have a good event for the community and make some money for our charities.
So the idea is that we will have a map much like we did for the car show, identifying where the businesses and where the places are to eat. We're going to expand upon the map that was provided for the car show, putting them into categories of places to eat and places to shop and even having Hawks Inn, which is open from 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays, so that people, we're trying to draw more people to Delafield. We'd like to get it on the city site, get the Department of Tourism, I'm sorry.
Is it the chain?
Promotion and Tourism.
Promotion and Tourism, thank you. So, and we're hoping all of you will put it on your own personal Facebook sites as well. We have a very short amount of time to hold a big event. And as you know, I'm willing to tackle insurmountable odds in doing things quickly and getting them done successfully. But it takes a whole city to become involved, to make an event successful. Many of the businesses that I've talked to already are very excited about having an event in February because the beginning of the year is usually very dead anyway. So having an event that'll draw people to Delafield in February is very welcomed by the businesses. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comment, do we have anybody online for citizens' comments? Okay. Citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we'll move on to 5A, Approval of Minutes or the Consent Agenda.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to 6. Board Committees and Commission Reports, 6A, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
Thank you very much. There's three things I just wanted to praise everybody of. One was, when I joined the Lake Welfare Committee this past April...
You need to pull your mic up tighter, huh? Sorry.
When I joined the Lake Welfare Committee this past April, we were told we'd be soon getting the Sewer Pack Watershed Survey, Water Quality and Sediment Survey for Lake Nega Wicke Shoreline. I just wanted to let everybody know that it's now December, almost turning into the next year, and we're still waiting on that. Apparently, it's done, sitting with the DNR and it's just not being approved, so that's where that rests. Secondly, the Lake Welfare Committee is working on the webpage currently and refining that. But more importantly, the final thing is, I just want to let you know that currently there's, we're working on a code change. The intent is, all the other communities, and I've mentioned this before, nearby, protect their lake waters from excessive runoff on lake properties by limiting the amount of impermeable surface area within 35 feet of the shoreline. That's typical. To at least maximum of 25% impermeable surface. Amy Barrows had written up a proposed ordinance for the city that included for Delafield, the entire land parcel, but up to 50% of the impermeable area had to be, 50% of the area had to be impermeable surface or less. She came up and joined us for the last meeting. And after all of that discussion, it turned out to be far more broad than intended. And it's currently gone back to the drawing board. And the Lake Welfare Committee is revisiting other neighboring ordinances to see if it can refine it to avoid unintended consequences.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to 6B, Library Board. Jackie?
All right. The Library Board met on the 8th of December. And I have a couple of things that I wanted to remember to, or to mention. Two programs, a visit with Santa on Zoom and a drive-through Santa experience were absolutely wonderful. About 150 people participated in visiting Santa either virtually or in the safety of their car. We're very happy we were able to continue the annual tradition of having Santa visit the library and were able to do so safely in regard to COVID procedures. Thanks, as always, to the Delafield Police Department for helping us make this happen, including, one of them was Santa. The library can now deliver books to your door as well. And they don't charge, like other services. We've expanded and revamped the home delivery service. And this is something that the library has done even before COVID-19, but they've sort of tweaked it. They can deliver anywhere within the Delafield Library Service Area. So that means Delafield, Neshota, Wales, Summit. Contact the library for more information or to set up delivery. And just as a reminder, the library will be closed Christmas Eve through Sunday, the 27th, and will reopen Monday, the 28th. And happy holiday.
Well, that's interesting. I did not know that the library delivered things.
Isn't that cool? Yeah.
Yeah.
They've always done it, but it's sort of fell by the wayside. And then with COVID, they just rekindled something that they've always done.
Yeah, so not getting too deep in the woods.
Do they pick up when the books are late?
I'm gonna get...
Because that would really be impressive.
I'll do that.
I'm just curious. I mean, in general, do you know, do they contract with an outside service? Or are they actually the librarians?
No, no, no. There are actually, two of our staff members are the delivery people.
Oh, okay. Neat, neat. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, C, Police Commission.
Yeah, there was a... Yeah, we had a police commission meeting last Wednesday, the 16th. The primary business for that meeting was to approve the hiring of the vacant officer. That was approved. So Chief Kale is proceeding that process with an expected timeframe of around July, I think, is what he estimated. And that was, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, D, Promotion and Tourism. Mr. Baron?
Well, they had a meeting and they were reviewing the year's activity, continuing to cut some of the costs. They did approve some funding for some of the requests, but they're very related to the city of Delafield and supporting the efforts of people working downtown to create traffic. The bigger picture thing is they reviewed the fund balance. So before we had the grant that we received from the state of about $50,000, there was about $110,000 in the bank. The assumption is we'll collect about another 20 this quarter, so that gives us a balance of about $180,000. Next year's estimated revenue right now is $60,000. Now, it's very conservative, but that gives us about $240, where our budget for next year is still $120,000, which is somewhat near half what it used to be. So that, that would allow us to end next year with around $110,000 in the bank. And this all came up because we're, we're very concerned that we have at least two years' worth of coverage for our cost budget right now. So I know that impacted the amount of money that the city got. And I know everything is tight, but that's the status.
Vaccine's on its way.
And, and clearly, if we have more revenues next year, we're going to be in better shape, but...
It's gotta be a better year for them, right?
The committee is more concerned that we can operate next year at a minimal level to, to, to cover the cost of administration and some of the promotions that we do.
Sounds good. I totally understand it. I'm just, the light at the end of the tunnel's getting bigger.
Yeah.
So we just, let's see it show up in the bank, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to number seven, Mayor's Report. There's two appointments here. A1, Appointment by Mayor Atwell of Matt Grimmer as a member of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, the term to expire April 2022.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay. And now we're on to A2, Appointment by Mayor Atwell of Jeff Crickham as a member of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, the term to expire April 2022.
I'll still move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I just ask, who moved and second? It's hard to see what...
I'm sorry, in a second.
Matt moved.
First. All right, thank you.
Sure. Abstentions? Passes. Okay, new business. 8A, Resolution Number 2020-16, Resolution to Set the 2021 Schedule of Fees for the City of Delafield. We got a few here in a row for you, so you can kick us off.
All right. I took a look at the current fee schedule that we had, realized we haven't adopted it since December of '17. Fee schedules, it's best to adopt them on an annual basis. Tom and I have talked about that in run budget time, just to keep on a consistent level and make sure we have the proper document that we can refer to. So I took a look at what we had and basically transferred it into a different format. And I had some corrections to some of the verbiage on there, some of the notations, and a couple of the, let's see, the, couple fee amendments I was proposing. One would be the operator's license fee. It's currently at $30. I did take a, a survey of a number of municipalities and it did average out to 35, so I was just proposing to raise that from 30 to 35. The other important one would be the cemetery fees. We were woefully undercharging. So I did get in touch with a couple other area communities who have cemeteries, and we should be at market rate. So that's what I raised the fees to on those. All the other changes are explained in my memo. Does anyone have any particular questions?
Personally, I'm okay with the leaker change and the cemetery change. I'm just reluctant to want to support the change in the operator fee from 30 to 35. Those businesses are really struggling. And as you had mentioned to me before, maybe about half of them are paid by our bartenders personally and the other half are paid by the bars. And I think that's just $5. We could wait for another year or four.
I, I concur with that. And I think that, I know it's impossible, or next to impossible to try to determine or come up with some sort of cost analysis as far as what it actually costs. I don't, I don't necessarily agree all the time with saying because our neighbor charges X amount, we should charge the same. That just, it never seems to go the other way. It's just a constant escalation without necessarily saying what it costs. I, I think that those are reasonable charges, especially the cemetery one. Those, those look like they're, it's not an everyday thing, thank God. But I think the, the operator's license one is something worthy of revisiting in a year as opposed to doing it right now as well.
So you need a motion to approve the list as proposed with the exception of the operator's license will remain at $30.
I'll second that, if that's what it is.
All right, is there any discussion?
Can I just make one comment?
Sure, have all the comments you want.
I had, I didn't get a chance to do it this time, but I proposed a form to Tom, basically a fee justification form. So down the road, once we get this in place and we can kind of gather ourselves, we'll be able to justify the fees in the manner that I think you're thinking about. A little bit more format other than I did a survey of. Things, things to come.
Yeah, and to extend, to extend the comments, I totally neglected to say that, two things. One, the surveys are significant. I think that's really important, that we aren't out of whack with what other people are doing. But also, the fact that you took the time, because I know this is, this is a problem and we've been trying to clean this up for a while. And that is, where fees appear in our code, it's totally untenable to have them in individual, you know, ordinances as opposed to a fee schedule. And I, and the work that you put in in the short time you've been here is outstanding as far as getting them out of the code, consolidated, organized. I, I'm not sure how or why you decided to do that, but I think it's exceptional. I mean, that's, because you can't, to find, because we had conflicts in the past. So this is something we've been kind of chasing. It's been better, but hopefully this is the coup de grâce that you're after here. And so really good work. I appreciate it. And I think this is, yeah, anyways.
Yes, and look for future changes to the code because some of the dollar amounts still are in several of the sections.
I will look for that, yeah.
Eventually, depending on if we can do a simple one or if we plan on doing other changes to that particular code, there will be future code changes to reference the fee schedule.
I like to say, make a list and let's just do them one by one and accomplish something, right?
Yep.
Keep it, keep it moving, a little bit by a little bit by a little bit, right? Because sometimes when we do a code codification, it's so complex and so many details, it's overwhelming, right? So just boom, 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 just keep it moving. All right. We have a motion and a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention passes. Okay. Steve, you are up again on B. Ordinance Number 774, Ordinance to Create Section 2-169 of the Delafield Municipal Code to Establish Admissible Board of Canvassers and to Provide for Canvassing of All Absentee Ballots at a Place Other Than the Polling Location.
So again, I wrote up a lengthy memo on this. The crux of it is, I'd like to be able to process the absentee ballots outside of the polling site back here for several reasons. One being, until we get the Badger Books, the, the electronic poll books that we propose, we got to manually keep track of numbering. And that gets very difficult when you have three different voting machines that you're putting ballots into on election day, plus four, at the last election, four poll book stations where people go to check in to vote. And then you got your absentee ballots. It just, it gets convoluted. It's very difficult for the chief inspectors to keep track of the numbering. The other aspect is, especially during now, the gym over at the church is not that big. I mean, it's, it's okay. It's about a three-quarter size basketball court, I believe, size. And then we use the side room, but try to free up some space by removing some of the poll workers that are there and bringing them down here, some of the machines. And then we could free up some more space to accomplish social distancing during pandemic. So those are the main reasons behind it. Aside from that, absentee ballots, a little bit of a process and it's probably better to have it here. We're, we're right upstairs and we can assist them if we need to. So that's the main part of it. As part, as far as getting this accomplished, there's statutory requirements, which is, I had to create this ordinance, which I had to have approved by the Wisconsin Electric Commission prior to even giving it to you. And the attached operation plan, that was all part of the WEC requirements to get this done.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Certainly, I'm no expert in this process. Certainly, I'm no expert at this process. Mine's more about just a perception question. And, and maybe we're just changing the order and it doesn't really change anything. But it, as I read this, I thought maybe I understood that there might be a scenario where people are at the polls and then boxes of ballots just show up and people that might just be voting or whatever or, or poll watchers wouldn't understand where those ballots might have come from, right? Maybe they were here at City Hall and they show up during the middle of the day, or they show up at the end of the evening. So I guess my question is, does this process change make that more likely to be a perception of people? And if, if it is, then is there possibility that the church would give us another room or something? I mean, I'll trust your judgment on it. I just don't, I'm concerned that perception might take place, but I don't completely understand the change you're asking for.
Okay, I'll, I'll take your perception, perception and flip it. Think of you as the voter standing in line. All of a sudden, somebody walks in with a bunch of ballots and you don't know the process. You might think something crazy is going on and then you're going to call the media and there's all sorts of hoopla and about that. So taking care of this, this situation, we won't be transferring any ballots over there. It's just going to be people walking in to vote at the polling site and that's all they're doing. So they're not seeing any part of the process with the absentee ballots. What happened, what would happen here is it would all be open. So if people do want to observe, they can still come down here and observe. And it's poll workers that are doing it. It's the same process. But I, as far as perception wise, I don't think, it's probably worse delivering a box, there are a couple boxes full of absentee ballots to a polling site. And in that scenario, we had to go down a hallway. Every time I was delivering during the middle of the day, I'd have to go down the exit and then pass people.
Is that what happens today?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I delivered the ballots in the morning, I, the parking lot was so full, I had to park around to the side. So I had a cart with a couple boxes of ballots that I'm rolling in right past a bunch of people. Who knows what they're thinking about it.
So does this process reduce that?
I think it reduces the perception.
That basically answers my question, yes.
And that's a great question because perception is so very important. My question though is about observers from the different parties. Will they require then, will they have an opportunity, they'll have an opportunity here and at the gymnasium. But they'll have to do it at the same time, so they'll have to have twice the number of observers, correct?
Correct. It's no different than having two polling sites.
Okay, sure. That's not unreasonable.
Yeah, and there's a process to make sure people are aware that we have the two sites, even though it's not called a polling site?
Yeah, in fact, with the code and the process, there's statutory notices that are, that have to be published regarding this municipal board of canvassers where and when they meet.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
So I have another question, and it has to do with timing. Is there, would there be any difference if we acted on this for you and procedurally and time-wise before the next election, which I'm assuming is April? I don't think we have a primary. We don't know until.
No, we don't know.
So when's the earliest next election? Would it matter if this carried over to our next meeting?
Yeah, actually it would because I'd have to get things in place for the February election now. Passing it in the, what, third week of January would be way too late.
Okay, alright. That, just wanted, you know, okay, alright.
And I did have two questions. One was, in looking at it, it says canvassing of all ballots, absentee ballots at a place. It says, other than the polling location, can we just specify City Hall so that's more clear? Or, you know, the opposite? It sounds like it could be anywhere. And the second question was, maybe you can do it too far right there. It also talked about, you could also appoint somebody, you could appoint somebody if you were unable to do it that, as well as two other canvassers would be there for the actual accounting process. If, I'd have a concern that you weren't there, so I don't know, maybe you can calm those concerns that I'd have there.
So as far as the appointment, that's just me appointing three of the, like, existing poll workers that we have. So I currently have two chief inspectors already, so likely one of them will come here.
Would do a fine job, by the way.
Yeah, yes, they do. So likely one of them will come here. So it's just appointing existing poll workers. So I'm transferring three to 10 poll workers or whatever from over at the polling site and just bring them over here and those who are the ones that I'd be appointing. So that's it. What was your first question?
About labeling at City Hall.
Oh, labeling. I did want to keep it open just in case. It needed to be at the Public Safety Building or some other location if something else was going on here. But as far as the timing goes, I would need to declare the City Hall site in plenty of advance notice.
There's always the potential that the election could be here again. And then, and I assume Steve would identify some other location as the location for this.
Yes, it's a good point.
So again, just, these questions are creating another question. So this alternate site, it's only used on election day or is it election day and the day before?
Election day.
Just the day?
Right.
Okay.
I'll move, Ordinance 774.
I'll second. And as far as comments go, I'll lead with the fact that I know, I'm certain that, I'm not alone in saying that I think that your job as clerk is, one of the primary things that we look for is the integrity of the elections and keeping us out of the news in a bad way. And you did a great job being only on the ground for a couple weeks here in this one during the conditions we were under. And also, I don't think that we've had the granularity of reporting. Not that, I can't, I can't, I'm not certain that it hasn't happened before. I'm going to assume it has, but your reports on the election came down to an explanation of why there was a gap in 40 or 50 numbers on the ballots and explaining in case anybody found out. And I'm certain it was likely to have happened in the past. Anyways, you've been extremely transparent and just keep it up. And I appreciate your efforts to make it less likely that something, quote suspicious, looks like it would be going on. So I'm all in favor of this.
Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Eight D. Elimination of clerk three position. Description and utility clerk position description effective February 4th, 2021.
You skipped C.
He skipped C.
Oh, I hate it when I mark it too early. Sorry about that. Eight C. Creation and administrative support specialist position description and administrative support assistant position description effective February 4th, 2021. Steve?
I'll move to a group. Are you looking for a motion?
I'll second it.
Or are you just telling?
We can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, Steve?
Okay, so as you may or may not know, there is a retirement in our office. So I got a chance to think about the duties that are being done and kind of shuffle things around and maybe somewhat equalize the two positions to the fact that right now there are certain duties that neither of them might know about for each other. And I'd like to get it a little bit more sustainable to the point where one will sort of be the lead in everything. The other person will somewhat know just about everything that the other person is doing with the exception of certain duties that are going to be specific for the specialist. As far as the titles go, I just kind of searched around. There's a lot of, you know, municipal titles of that similar nature, very similar to this. Administrative clerk, administrative specialist, all sorts, all kinds of titles. So I just chose these two titles. One of them, the specialist is, would be, like I said, the kind of the lead with a couple extra duties. The whole idea is to maybe get some of the duties off of me, Mary, the deputy clerk, and Amy, the treasurer. So it kind of frees us up to eventually help Tom and focus on some higher level things. So there'll be some additional duties given to the specialist. The assistant would be kind of more of an entry level position that would be assisting the specialist. Obviously, both of them will share in a significant amount of the duties as well as, you know, me, Tom, Mary, and Amy as well. So that's, that was the crux of the whole thing. We do want to, so the retirement is effective February 3rd. So that's why I made the effective day February 4th. The sooner I can get these two job descriptions approved, the sooner we can start putting an ad out and getting someone hired in the middle to late February. Hopefully before the election, which is February 16th. But we understand if we're stealing someone from another municipality, it might be different, difficult to get them before the election.
So I just have a discussion item. So with prior clerks, you know, we've talked about internally and Tom obviously included as well about trying to, what we could do to find efficiencies within City Hall. And, you know, certainly one of those things that we targeted to take, you know, reduce paperwork. And, you know, it's amazing how much paper we actually move back and forth between the police department, public works, City Hall, and so forth. And we implemented civics plus as being one of those steps in being able to try to find efficiencies, pay the capital cost now, and then reap the benefits over time. You know, one of the things that I've talked about during those discussions that these efficiencies might be able to allow us to eliminate a half a clerk position, which could create a scenario where we'd hire somebody and then, you know, maybe it wouldn't be a long-term position. So my question for you is, based on what you've experienced so far and knowing the implementation of civics plus, is it your opinion that we haven't found enough efficiencies there to be able to eliminate that half clerk position at this time? Maybe something that could occur in the future, but right now you expect this clerk position and it's actually what the vote would be on, I believe, on D for the foreseeable future?
Well, first of all, the corrector was civic systems. Civic plus is our website.
Okay.
It's very confusing, I know, because they have civic connect. Cassell Connect is the particular program from the company.
Okay, got it.
So that program is used to do fund balance. Utility billing, payroll are the main parts of it. Tom, am I missing any particular parts of it?
Nope.
After this last week or two weeks ago and a little bit last week and this week, they've been training on utility billing. It's basically to take over existing programs that we've had from, trying to find a good adjective. It's modernizing our processes for fund balance, for budgeting, for utility billing, and, oh, accounts receivable, which is also going to be coming up, and payroll. It's really just modernizing it. I don't see it really affecting too much of the clerical work that's being done. Obviously, part of it is going paperless, but we still get paper invoices. So they still need to be scanned and put in, categorized, just like we do with our document management program. So I don't really see too much savings with civic systems in relation to those two particular positions. But there might have been some backstory that I don't know about with civic systems. Tom, do you have any comments on that?
No, no particular details about a backstory.
So I guess the moral of the story is you feel this position is still needed and, you know, for the foreseeable future.
Yes, and I think you've seen it from me. I've searched for plenty of ways to find savings and efficiencies. That's kind of what I do. So that'll be, that'll continue to happen. It'll help if some of my more mundane duties are kind of off of me and Mary. So her and I can work together to find some more efficiencies. And it'll help Tom in the long run when we can help him. We all help each other succeed so we can get the city to succeed.
Okay, great, thanks. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, now correctly, we're in order again. Eight D. Elimination of clerk three position description and utility clerk position description effective February 4th, 2021. Steve, anything to add?
No, the two positions you just approved are just basically replacing these two. So to make things a little bit more clear, I just want to have a nice motion to eliminate the previous one. So we have it on record.
So move.
Second. I will make a comment that relates to the earlier one too. Waukesha County has done this over the last five to 10 years, eliminating these positions that have these tight descriptions and going to this assistant and specialist category. And the one thing you get out of it is it doesn't box someone in to say, I'm just the utility clerk. It does allow you to assign levels of duty across the organization. And you pick these two because you're seeing a lot of communities post this exact same job. So now someone that works for Waukesha County has administrative assistant. They might apply for this. And the final thing is, we still need good separation of duties, you know, for verification and things like that. So you can never shrink everything down to one person. So, but I think the, that's what I like about this move is it creates something that isn't related to just this one box. So someone says, oh, this is my job. I'm not helping over here. When you need help on elections, these folks are involved too, so.
I think we've always, at least as long as I've been in City Hall, we've tried to spend quite a bit of time on cross-training. But you're right, changing these descriptions, as Steve stated earlier, makes that process even easier.
Exactly. It just doesn't allow someone to box themselves in and say, oh, this is what I do.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, eight E. Vouchers, payables, report for reporting dates 12/8/2020 through 12/21/2020 in the amount of $147,464.04 for accounts payable and $75,546.56 for payroll. Used to be just the vouchers list. Now I gotta read all these numbers.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll so move.
I'll second to bear bills.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, nine A. Report of city officials. Council request for future agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to item 10. Matters for possible closed session. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to the provision of Wisconsin statute 19.851c considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. More specifically regarding the performance review and compensation of the city administrator, director of public works. The council will convene in the open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda. Which for those out there, is just one line item and that's the discussion of the meeting we'll be talking about in closed session.
I'll move that we go to closed session.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Alderson Saloga. Here.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Valdi.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Grimmer.
Aye.
Kassen.
Aye.
Iker.
Aye.
That's seven yeses.
Okay. Mike, let us know when we're off. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order.
We need a motion to...
And I need a motion to convene back into open session.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, when the clerk gets back here, we'll do a roll call vote.
That was Tim and Phil, motion to open session.
Motion is to go back into open session. Alderson Saloga.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Valdi.
Aye.
Okay. Dean. Can you hear me?
He said aye, I could see him.
Okay. Grimmer.
Aye.
Kassen.
Aye.
And Iker.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now we are on to A. Discussion of possible action regarding the compensation for the city administrator, director of public works.
I'll make a motion to continue the existing contract with our city administrator with a compensation increase of 2% for 2021.
I'll second.
Alright, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Passes. Great. Okay, seeing no further business, number 11, we are now adjourned at 9:28. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. See you next year.
Merry Christmas.